Okay, Borough of White Oak Meeting, Council meeting nineteen twenty-five, seven thirty P M. The board. You will call please.
I just want to do a pledge.
Yes. Pledge to leave.
To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now roll.
Here.
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 President.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of April fourteenth, like?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Need a motion to approve minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, council workshop meeting at twenty, uh, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to the second. Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Executive session, Ashley.
Thank you, President Davis. Um, we had an executive session to discuss litigation items.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna go into public comments section under Pennsylvania Sunshine Act sixty-five, P A C S seven-one-zero dot one, public participation. The Borough of White Oak will provide an opportunity for residents and taxpayers of the borough to make public comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. We have, uh, some names here. One of us states your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Roger Lash from Point Setta Drive two-six-oh-two, Point Setta Drive, White Oak. I wanted to address some of the issues about the ordinances in the borough about the grass cutting. Uh, when we had rentals over on the Branmore section, the minute my tenant wouldn't do it immediately, it seemed like they, it was brought to their attention, but lately I've been passing, just today, through the borough and there is numerous properties with tax, cars sitting in driveways, unregistered, um, things of that nature, garbage cans, things that never get taken care of, uh, construction equipment that's been sitting out front for weeks and no one's done anything. And it just looks very bad. Uh, when I moved here in eighty-eight, I've been living in and out of White Oak since mid-seventies, so most, more than half my life I've lived in White Oak, but it certainly has taken a turn and I'd like to address it so that, uh, that something, or find out what is being done about it. Also, there's one major issue is on my street on Point Setta, when you're coming down Point Setta, no one stops at that stop sign where it meets faucet. They just blow right through it. Today, school bus. School bus.
They're sometimes worse than the normal drivers.
That's, it's, it's terrible and it needs, I think it, something needs to be done. I know a lot of the officers, I was an officer at UPMC, so I know a lot of the officers that were, that are here now at the borough. Uh, they're good guys, but I know they can't be everywhere all the time.
If you could get the number from the school bus, there's numbers on the side, if you could possibly get that, tell us here, we can call the school.
Yeah, I, I should have done that, but I was su, taken by surprise when he did it. He goes through the stop sign, makes the bend, then he stops, which is illegal because according to the, uh, vehicle code, you have to stop at the stop sign, then he has to, if he wants to proceed forward, so those things aren't even being addressed by the state.
If you see it again, get another voice.
Absolutely. Will do, but I didn't know if something's in the works or if somebody is addressing all these issues or...
Well, we were just talking about some of the grass, earlier and we're gonna get the act code officer to, you know, get out and start, uh, psych, you know, psyching somebody's properties.
Do you have a list of the property, sir?
Pardon?
Do you have like a list of the properties? I know that you may not, that you may not.
I did not. I didn't want to, you know, fear somebody out of the property, but I just wanted to address the issue as a whole that there's...
There is a lot of them.
There's a lot. There's trash, when you're coming from Hayler Heights down Henderson and down Sharp Street, there's washers and dryers sitting out on the road.
We got a guy alter.
It's just, it's looking back to the borough.
There's washers and dryers in the yards, is that what you're saying?
Out front, they're just sitting out front. The thing is, White Oak was always, I don't wanna say aloof, but they've always had a better community.
The original residents aren't here anymore, they're different people that don't care like they used to.
Well, that doesn't mean they can't come up to the standards. So I have one final question. Do they have a brochure or something that's issued to new residents or something that could be given out in the mail to every resident in the borough that says, listen, this is a group of some of the, or of the ordinances that are not being here and that you need to start adhering to it? Like parking on the lawns or people have a driveway, four-car driveway and they park their cars out on the street? And yet, one more question, are the cars supposed to be off of the street in the evening? Like, I know White Oak, or Whitehall and that, you can't park one in the street.
Not necessarily, but if it's presenting a safety issue, then that's a different question.
Because online, some of those cars down at the bottom, they park so many cars there, if a fire truck had to come through, it's not.
That's why fire trucks got big bumpers.
Yeah, I know, well.
The, the, yeah.
Yeah.
The high grass is being taken care of and then there's also, for some of the parking issues that you're concerned about, um, the zoning and land use committee, um, that's headed up by Councilwoman Blackman DePaulis, that we've applied for a MAP grant, so the hope is that eventually those ordinances are going to be completely rewritten and much more effective, but if there is like a parking issue that you think is causing a safety issue, definitely bring that, you know, to Manager Palio's attention and that's something that we might be able to address in the me, in the meantime, but just know that there is a much larger, council's, council's addressing this in a much larger macro level way.
I appreciate it. Thank you all for your time.
And I like your idea about, you know, maybe not just new residents, but reminding people, you know, and pointing them to the ordinances, these are the things that are expected of you to keep up with your property. I think that's a good idea and I think we'll take something like that under consideration.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all.
Kenny Muncher.
How are you doing?
Pretty good, how are you doing?
Not bad, sorry. My name's Ken Muncher. I've been a resident of White Oak for a little over fifty years. This is my first council meeting that I've ever been to. I spent, uh, six years in the United States Army. During that time, I was Soldier of the Year on three different levels. After the military, I was recruited and enlisted in the Pennsylvania State Police. I was Trooper of the Year out of four thousand two hundred troopers, as a Uniformed Trooper, Trooper of the Year, as an undercover trooper. Supervised patrol narcotics and K nine troopers. I trained thousands of local and state police troopers in highway interdiction, hundreds of local and state troopers in undercover work. So I have a pretty good understanding what it takes to be a good soldier, good leader, good trooper, good cop, good supervisor. For the last ten, fifteen years, I've sat on your board for police selection and promotion. We've selected a lot of great candidates here and we've selected one or two that disappointed me. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask you to consider Steve Bell as White Oak Police Chief, and I'm gonna tell you why. I've known Steve since he started and believes he's a great role model for young officers to follow, 'cause we only have thirteen people in his department. We need a soldier that can be a chief, not a chief that can't be a soldier. I don't know if any of you remember this, but in two thousand seven, White Oak, along with several other local departments, did an active shooter, Joel Francis McClure. Cut a long story short, the first sixteen cops got killed as they went in the building. By the time I got back to the Pittsburgh barracks, I received several calls from community members who had heard about the massacre and asked what happened. Steve Bell was one of those sixteen that got massacred that day. He immediately reached out to me and asked me for training. For the next several weekends, I brought the trooper back to play the bad guy that day to show the officers that came every weekend how to clear the building without getting killed. Steve Bell was there for all the training. In my opinion, the chief of, of whoever was in these departments at that time should have been the first one through that door. They weren't. They sat in the command post after sixteen of their guys got whacked. Leaders don't do that. They're the first one through the door. Not only weren't they the first one through the door, they weren't number seventeen either. So there was no more cops left, the exercise had to stop. I don't have any kids or grandkids or staff or teachers or anything in my family, but if I did, I would have Steve Bell be the first chief through that door today. I've worked with numerous police supervisors that on paper had a great resume, made them look like Superman, but turned out to be more like Barney Fife in reality. Everyone who was on the police hiring board did a great job getting us a nucleus of a great department here. Let's not, you know, let's not root it by getting someone in here with a lot of ink on a piece of paper. I have seen one person break a department. We don't want that here. We need a chief that can soldier and lead. Being a nice guy doesn't necessarily make you a good leader. No one asked me to be here. I don't hang out with Steve Bell, I don't hang out at his home, he doesn't hang out in mine. In fact, I don't even know where the guy lives. I know him on a professional level and believe he would be the best candidate for this job. Appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Oh, you timed that perfect.
I did. I timed it all day.
Kathy, is she still here?
She is.
Okay, she's gone. This color is gone. Anybody else for a public comment? Brady, uh, Mayor's Report, Ina Martin.
Thank you, President Davis. Please activate April twenty twenty-five. Two disorderly conduct arrests, one warrant arrest, ninety-four traffic citations issued, seventy total traffic stops, eight vehicle accidents, six domestic-related incidents, nine animal complaints to see steer, four criminal trespass arrests, seven PFA served, seventeen welfare checks, one simple assault arrest, one DUI arrest, total reportable incidents three hundred and twenty-two. That concludes my report, President Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Standing Committee reports, finance Jason Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, Treasurers Report for April twenty twenty-five. Beginning balance unrestricted account, one million seventy-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars forty-five cents. Beginning balance restricted account, three million three hundred seventeen thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars seventy cents. Total account balance, four million three hundred ninety-six dollars two hundred fifty-four, I'm sorry, three million three hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars fifteen cents. Actual revenues unrestricted account, nine hundred ninety thousand four hundred ten dollars fifty-two cents. Restricted account, four hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars ninety-nine cents. Account balance, one million four hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars fifty-one cents. Actual expenditures unrestricted account, eight hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars twenty-six cents. Restricted account, eighty-three thousand four hundred thirty dollars twenty-eight cents. Account balance, nine hundred eighty thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars fifty-four cents. Fund balance unrestricted account, one million one hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars seventy-one cents. Restricted account, three million seven hundred sixteen thousand twenty-eight dollars forty-one cents. Account balance, four million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars twelve cents. That's in the form of a motion.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Motion approving the check register for the month of April, which in, which includes electronic fund transfers and general fund checks in the following ranges, five-one-three-seven-one to five-one-five-two-two totaling six hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars seventeen cents.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Motion approving the check register for the month of April, which in, which includes electronic fund transfers and general fund checks in the following ranges, five-one-three-seven-one to five-one-five-two-two totaling six hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars seventeen cents.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Motion authorizing the following inter-fund transfers for the month of April. Liquid fuels to the general fund, ten thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars forty-four cents. Solid waste to the general fund, sixty-nine thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars forty cents. Post-retirement to the general fund, three, three thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars forty-four cents. Total transfers, eighty-three thousand four hundred thirty dollars twenty-eight cents.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to open an account at First Commonwealth Bank to be designated specifically for the Veterans Memorial Project and authorize the council president and borough manager to execute all documents on behalf of the borough.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
That ends my report.
Thank you, Jason. Health, Environment and Cable, Joelle Harper.
Thank you, President Davis. I motion to authorize payment to Kevin Kane for wildlife services in the amount of eight hundred and fifty dollars for the month of April.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
I motion to authorize payment to the Hideaway Kennels for animal control services in the amount of three hundred and seventy dollars for the month of April.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
And let me just have one announcement. The Rabies Clinic in partnership with the Animal, White Oak Animal Safe Haven is scheduled for Saturday, June seventh, from eleven A M. to two P M. here at the municipal, municipal building parking lot. The residence rate is five dollars, proof of residency is required, non-resident rate is ten dollars. Additional information is available on our website, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joelle. Parks and Rec, Julie Overman.
Thank you, President Davis. First, I need to apologize to members of the rec committee that showed up tonight. Um, it wasn't until we walked out here that I realized that it was inadvertently left off the agenda to approve the appointments of our new rec committee members. May fifth, we had our first committee meeting, it was very successful. We did say that they would be appointed at this meeting, we talked about it and then inadvertently it was left off, so I do apologize, it's nothing personal, I, I, we walked out, I saw everybody sitting here and, um, I just realized that it was not put on there, so I apologize. So please come next month, I promise it will be on the agenda, I apologize. We had a great meeting, it was very successful. It's my fault, I take, I take responsibility. Um, I do have a couple announcements. White Oak Pool opens for the twenty twenty-five season on Monday, May twenty-sixth, eleven A M. to seven P M. We'll be hosting two more, two more pool pass pre-sale dates on May twenty-first and May twenty-second, from four-thirty to seven P M. at the Borough Building. From May twenty-sixth through June eighth, there will be no daily admissions to the pool, it will be pass holder, pass holders only. Um, White Oak American Legion post seven oh-one, the Memorial Day Parade, um, is scheduled for Monday, May twenty-sixth, starts at twelve P M. at noon. Um, White Oak Community Yard Sale is scheduled for Saturday, June twenty-first, from eight A M. to three P M. Rain date is Sunday, June twenty-second. Please contact Michelle at the Borough Office to be placed on the list. Uh, the White Oak Volunteer Fire Company Number One Golf Outing is scheduled for Saturday, June seventh, with a nine A M. shotgun start at Butler's Golf Course. Cost is a hundred twenty-five dollars per golfer with other sponsorship opportunities available. Um, there's a number, four-one-two-nine-nine-nine-six-nine-four-three for more information. George?
Uh, thank you, Julie. Uh, also, also should say that, uh, swimming pool passes will be available up at the pool also, although it'll take a little bit longer if you wait to go up at the pool. Okay, our seniors, uh, last Wednesday was our monthly meeting. We had Officer Martell Fontaine, uh, he did a class on CPR and health emergencies. We had about forty-five seniors attend that meeting. Uh, we continue to have our, our yoga on Mondays and Wednesdays at eleven A M. We have coffee hours this Thursday at nine-thirty. Uh, also, this Wednesday at one o'clock, we will have our second in a series of four of, uh, personal defense classes held, uh, held by Joe Hoffman. Uh, the seniors also have a trip to, uh, FIP's conservatory on May twentieth. Uh, next month, uh, yoga continues on Mondays and Wednesdays. Our monthly meeting in June will be a picnic, uh, starting at one o'clock on June eleventh, and we will also be entertained by Tammy Petty, uh, she's a tribute artist, and our coffee hours in June will be on the fifth and the nineteenth at nine-thirty A M. And that concludes the senior report.
Lori. Athletic Association. Thank you, Julie. Um, right now, White Oak Athletic Association is in full fled, softball, baseball season. Um, currently, they are also taking registrations for three-on-three basketball. So far, they have thirty-three children that are signed up and they are taking, um, sign-ups until June twentieth. Also, on June twenty-ninth, the Athletic Association will be participating in Youth Sports Day at PNC Park, where coaches, parents, players and family members are invited to, for a discounted, a discounted rate for tickets. And that's all I have for White Oak Athletic Association.
Thank you, Julie, George and Lori. Planning and zoning, Amanda DePaulis.
Thank you, President Davis. I'm gonna read the highlights from the monthly permit violation report for April. Uh, the following inspections were conducted, nineteen occupancy inspections, twelve occupancy re-inspections for rental inspections, six complaint inspections, four violation inspections and one site visit for, for zoning took place. Um, the following permit certificates or notices were issued, uh, twenty-three certificates of occupancy, three temporary certificates of occupancy, one temporary access certificate, five zoning permits, two zoning certification letters were issued, four permit applications were sent to C E A for review, three residential building permits were received back from C E A and processed, and five violation notices were issued. A copy of the report will be available at the Borough Building during, um, normal business hours for your review. And additionally, I have, uh, a motion to approve the Tricog Land Bank's intent to acquire the property located at one hundred Congress Street, lot and block number four-six-zero-dash-P dash-two-four-nine and waive the sixty-day notice period.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
That concludes my report.
Public Safety, Lori Schurg.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, Public Safety, we've been pretty busy lately. Um, we've had, in the last couple of weeks, we've had, been having meetings on the thirtieth, again on the fifteenth of this month, to go over chief applicants and the dates and questions for the first round of in-person interviews. Um, also, with, um, fire companies, on May sixth, we met to go, we met both with, um, White Oak Number One and Rainbow's Fire Chiefs, along with members of the fire departments, to go over the study that was done by D C E D with possibly merging, uh, the two fire companies. However, the study was not very accurate and what the firehalls had imagined what a merger would look like. So D C E D will be sending another consultant sometime in the near future to someone more in line with what they envisioned. And then also, I'd like to mention that on this past Friday, on the sixteenth, um, we just had the air graduation at McKee Sport Area High School. Um, myself, along with Ina and George, we were able to go and attend that, but that was very, very well managed. Um, there were some very heartfelt essays that the essay winners had, were able to read to everybody that was there, but, um, and I'd like to thank, um, Officer Fontaine for putting on, uh, he, he did amazing, honestly, amazing. Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, Lori. Public Works, George Kambackas.
Thank you, Chuck. Our, our April report is available, um, Monday, Monday through Friday, twenty hours in nine and four, the, the highlights of April, which included approximately eight hundred man-hours, five hundred and fifty-five were spent at the pool, making sure it's ready for our Memorial Day opening, and, and almost a hundred hours were, uh, spent on mowing grass at the parks. This time, I'd like the motion to accept the amended retirement of Public Works employee Anthony Roush, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and approve the payment of his accrued time benefits as per his employment contract.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
I motion to approve the temporary construction easement for the Educational Drive Storm Sewer Outflow Repair Project located at seventeen-eleven Educational Drive and authorize the council president and borough manager to execute the easement on behalf of the borough.
Got a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, George. Need a motion to accept the tax collector's report and pay the commissions and fees due for April twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Got a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Engineers Report, Amber.
Thank you, President Davis. I have a handful of items for you, counsel, tonight. The first, P N E N R. reached out to D C N R. to schedule the final inspection at the Heritage Hill Park Playground. We're looking forward to closing out that project. Second item, I want to mention the, um, Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Opportunity. Applications are due at the end of this month and there is a resolution on the agenda tonight, um, for borough's, council's consideration for the asphalt basketball court, tennis court improvements project located at Heritage Hill. And lastly, in regards to the potential demolition, demolition projects, we plan to conduct the asbestos, um, survey tomorrow on May twentieth for the property at one eleven thirty-nine California Avenue. And that is all I have for council tonight.
Thank you, Amber. Need a motion to accept the engineers' report and pay the fees due to P N E N R. Inc. for invoice two-six-seven-nine-nine dated May fourteen, twenty twenty-five, totaling fourteen thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, the second, question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Solicitors Report, Ashley.
Thank you, President Davis. Um, I just wanted to provide an update, um, at a prior workshop meeting, um, at the request of council and also the zoning officer. I have been, um, working on preparing an amendment to the zoning ordinance to accommodate, um, for the enforcement of new, um, signs that have been popping up in the borough, um, that, so I'm hoping to have that prepared for next month and to start running that through the zoning ordinance amendment process. So that is in the works, but I do have a non-zoning ordinance, um, that's on the agenda for approval tonight, and that, um, is an ordinance that modifies the park rules to allow for the sale and/or consumption of alcohol during borough-sponsored events. So that, um, is something that I will read shortly, um, and that's for your consideration. That's it.
Need a motion to accept the solicitors' report and pay the fees due to Tucker Aronberg Attorneys for April twenty twenty-five, billing cycle totaling seven thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, the second, question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
So we have a resolution two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-eight. It's a resolution to make refund of certain real property taxes to certain property owners as hereinafter listed by reason of official change order, gentrification issued by Allegheny County Board of Assessments, appeals, reviews, as well as abatements or overpayments.
Need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five-dash-zero-eight?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, the second, question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Next, um, we need a motion to approve ordinance number two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-nine. It's an ordinance of the Borough of White Oak, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Article nine fifty-one entitled Parks, Section nine fifty-one point zero-three, entitled prohibited conduct, to allow for the consumption and sale of alcoholic beverages in borough parks for borough-sponsored special events.
Need a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five-dash-zero-nine?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, the second, question or motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
And then last, we need a motion to approve resolution two-zero-two-five-dash-one-zero. It's a motion to adopt the authorized official resolution that the Borough of White Oak of Allegheny County hereby requests a P A Greenways Trails and Recreation Program, a And then last, we need a motion to approve resolution two-zero-two-five-dash-one-zero. It's a motion to adopt the authorized official resolution that the Borough of White Oak of Allegheny County hereby requests a PA Greenways Trails and Recreation Program, a GTRP grant, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the White Oak Borough Heritage Hill Park Asphalt Court Rehabilitation Project. And there is a local, a fifteen percent local match for the project, which would be approximately thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five-dash-one-zero?
So moved, second.
Got a motion, the second, question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any new business?
Actually, yes, I'm sorry, I'd like to apologize. I meant to do this in the beginning of the meeting. If we could please have a moment of silence for White Oak American Legion Board President, James David Fay Senior, known as Jimmy Fay, who passed away on May fourteenth of this Thank you.
Technology and Communications Committee.
So I have a motion to approve a proposal from BNS Web Creations in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars for the borough's website redesign project.
A motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Okay, I also have a motion to authorize the Technology and Communications Committee to, it's actually to convert the borough website and email accounts to a dot gov domain, not to research it, but to actually make it happen.
A motion on the floor, do you have a second?
Second.
Question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any old business? Second, June ninth, twenty twenty-five, six forty-five PM, council workshop meeting. June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, six forty-five, council workshop meeting, seven thirty, the same night, it's the regular council meeting. Motion to return?
So moved, second.